I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council meeting, Monday, November 4, 2024, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item one, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to agenda item number two, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Shenyer.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Captain.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
And Counselor Rivas.
Captain. Moving on to agenda item number three, consider and accept the meeting minutes of October 21st, 2024 council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Here's a motion second, any addition? Additions, corrections? No all those in favor? Opposed? One abstaining? All bashes, accept the minutes. Moving on to four, subcommittee reports, Department of Public Works, Counsel Shenyer.
Uh, no rural report, and we'll have a meeting, I believe it's next Tuesday night at 6:00 PM.
Move on to Education Human Services, Counsel.
There is no report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
General Government, Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, no report, uh, no meeting scheduled at this time.
Moving on to Planning and Development, Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, I yield to Counsel Marquetti, who chaired the meeting in my absence.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, we had a P and D Subcommittee on October 29th. Agenda items nine through 13 were voted on, and I'll speak to them at that time, thank you.
Moving on to protection of precious property, no report at this time. Chairman's announcement, agenda item number five, I would just like to, uh, mention or thank Congressman Neal, who came into Southbridge and presented us with a $1 million check for the new fire station. Um, he said a few fine words, um, he's always had a great relationship, uh, in the town of Southbridge. He's, he's delivered once again for our fire station. One other comment I have is I, uh, I saw our DPW director doing something that we haven't done in a, in decades, and that's pave your own street. Um, the gentleman wanted to experiment and borrowed a paver and paved one of the streets, small streets in the town of Southbridge. We've got some pictures, it's an interesting concept, the, uh, the boys down at DPW really liked it, it was exciting, it was more of a construction role than cutting grass. Um, something that I think DPW is going to be looking into as we move forward into next year. Moving on to agenda item number six, Town Manager's announcement, it's Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, just a reminder that the municipal curbside, collection of yard waste will continue through the end of this month. Uh, make sure you put it during your curbside collection of all town residents that participate in the, uh, curbside, uh, program. Uh, the drop off for Southbridge residents at the Department of Public Works will also continue through November 30th. At that time, there will be no further either a curbside collection of yard waste or drop off for yard waste. It's used, uh, quite extensively, so make sure you get that done. Um, our Madam Town Clerk asked me to mention today, today is Election Hero Day, uh, November 4th, 2024. He would, uh, we would like to thank all election workers who work for the town. Without them, elections wouldn't happen, and they all worked very hard and long hours for not really a lot of pay, but we do thank them because otherwise elections would not take place. Reminder that tomorrow, Tuesday, November 5th, voting will take place at the community center at 153 Chestnut Street. The polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. A reminder that there are no, um, votes to be taking place here in the town hall. We constantly have people come here to continue to vote at the town hall. However, um, the only place to cast ballots tomorrow will be at the community center on Chestnut Street. Also, she asked that we express that there will be long lines, we anticipate long lines. Please use patience, um, in regards to that, we do have that all marked out at the community center for traffic control. There'll be extensive, uh, number of police officers there to direct residents into the right places as well as poll workers. And as of today, approximately 3,500 voters in the town of Southbridge either utilized absentee ballots or early voting, so that's a pretty good turnout on early voting. In the town hall alone, it was about 1,300 residents that came in to vote here at the town hall, which is pretty good. Another announcement, again, an update on the municipal electric aggregation plan. Again, uh, we have a contract for a period of 35 months. Our website will be active, uh, through, on the town website, directing you to the southbridgecommunityelectricity.com website, where there'll be a lot of information. Today I received the public communication schedule. Our, in the next week or so, we will have the press release, social media post, and flyers announcing the program. On or about November 12th, postcards will arrive in mailboxes for most residential and small business customers with a simple heads up about the upcoming program and community meetings to learn more. On November 14th, an official notification letter will arrive in mailboxes for most residential and small business customers. It will contain instructions on how to participate or how you can opt out. On December 5th, again, on December 5th, we will hold a community meeting here at 6:00 PM in the Town Council Chambers to answer any questions about the program. This will be held in person at 6:00 PM in the council chambers here. On December 14th, that will be the deadline to opt out of the program before it begins. Anyone may continue to opt out at any time thereafter. So that is the updates for the municipal aggregation plan. Again, the rate, uh, that our default rate is 13, 040 cents per, um, per kilowatt hour. And finally, just want to announce that, uh, through economic development, as everybody's aware, our raise grant, we did not receive the raise grant for the Hamilton Street Transportation Project. However, we did receive notification, um, that asked if we would wish to participate in a round for our highly rated and also a project of merit, which we were, that the department reserved a portion of the $1.5 billion, and that we could apply without any changes to our program. So hopefully, we will be considered in that round of funding, uh, to go forward. Uh, we couldn't make any changes to that, but hopefully, given the fact that we've been up there a couple times into the final stages, that they will find this as a project of merit, so we're still in the round for that. Uh, maybe we are going to reach out to our legislatures to see if they can put a good word in for that. And that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to seven presentations, at this time, I'd like to call on Dave Adams, Veterans Counsel of Southbridge, also a former counsel and friend, welcome Dave.
Mr. Chair, counselors, town manager, residents, hope everybody's doing well on this fine cold mo- or evening. So, as promised, uh, every six months, I have to come up here and present to you how we're doing on the initiative. So I'm going to give that to you today, and then also a couple other things at the tail end that I wanted to discuss. So, the initiative, everybody's seen this before, why we did it, uh, where we're kind of at right now, but mostly why we were doing this initiative in the first place. Obviously, there's two parks that we talked about, Dresser and World War Memorial Park. The World War Memorial Park, again, you've seen this slide multiple times, just wanted to refresh your memory on this, what it looked like before. The design, um, that we came up with, which, uh, ultimately turned into that, right there. And we actually have a sign out there, and everybody's, uh, come by, we've had a few events. Uh, we've had, I see people over there having, uh, lunch with their friends. So the park has, uh, been well worth it to redo. With the help of a grant, including our own money and the council, we were able to refurnish the monuments that were there. We thank the ARPA Committee and the Town Council, again, for providing 15,000, and we got to match that with the heritage grant from the state itself, total cost around $180,000. Uh, proud to say that we didn't ask that the taxpayers of Southbridge immediately donate any of the money or provide any of those funds. Uh, obviously, we got one state grant, and we also raised the rest of the money, um, pretty much about $100, $120,000 out of our own pocket through donations of, of residents of Southbridge and businesses. So we redeveloped the first public park, which is the World War Memorial Park, and finally has a sign up there. Matter of fact, I saw a sign the other day, it said Elm Street Park. Um, somebody just must have thrown that up there, but by our own notes back in 1930, 1938, the minutes, it's the World War Memorial Park again, the first park, public park here in the town of Southbridge, and it's actual Veterans Park. So the only way to remove this park would be through the, uh, the people of Southbridge to vote on it and the state legislation. We had a fine gentleman, Mark, come down and refurbish all the monuments, including the, uh, Franco-American. That plaque on the bottom left-hand side weighs about 700 pounds, you can't move it, um, by hand, by yourself. Took a lot of, uh, a few forklifts to help that out. Um, again, about $180,000, and we continue to raise funds to maintain the park. We're selling bricks, there's about 53 bricks right in front of the, the new flagpole. And, uh, right now, we've already sold five, we just started the process through selling the bricks enough, and there's the, uh, also the donations, uh, that can be given for the maintenance of the park, the ongoing maintenance. So the fall, uh, we had Babes Landscape come down and do, um, fall flowers and plants, and we'll do that again in the springtime before Memorial Day. The last thing we have to do with that park right now is put a donor plaque on it, and we've partnered up, you'll hear me, uh, say this a couple times, uh, the donor, we've partnered up with a startup company called See My Legacy, which, uh, Ms. Dean, uh, sent that information to us, and we actually partnered up with this startup company out of Ohio. And this donor plaque will be a nice thin piece, it won't be bronze, a big, big piece, uh, big plaque. We don't have to find a piece of granite, we're actually, it's a tin with a QR, QR code on it, and actually, all the names we could put on there that donated and spent some time on the World War Memorial, uh, Park itself. And the QR code will have the pictures of before and afters. Now, we're on to Dresser Memorial Park, and last time, uh, met with you all, uh, for some reason, my PowerPoint slides didn't work, so here it is, we're about at 80% design completion, we've already done the survey, engineering study, electrical engineers have already been out there to increase the power, because there'll be a lot more lights out there. Um, we just started with the fundraising process, and, uh, we're also going to be adding to this park, the OIF, OEF, for Afghanistan and Iraq as well, this POW MIA, um, uh, monument. And then, uh, the Veterans Council has already voted on where these monuments will go throughout the park. Uh, obviously, subject to change, and they estimated cost about $2 million. That's what the park right now, the 80% design rendition looks like. You see, we expanded it quite a bit, uh, it's changed from the last time I gave you a brief, we just had some updates, uh, given. Obviously, we're going to expand the, the parking lot, ADA compliant, I mean, all, all through the park itself. You'll have, uh, I'll show you this, on the other side, it's a three-tiered system. So if you look at the, uh, if you look at the, the, the park on the left-hand side, that'll be the three-tiered system. We're going to have a lot of our monuments through there, uh, somebody just asked me today about the honor roll, uh, what are we going to do with that, because it is faded, it costs about $100,000 in loan just to fix that honor roll plaque itself, those plaques that are out there. So what we decided on was, and I've said this before, we're going to put granite in that front. See if you can, if I can see it. And that, as you walk into the park, you'll see that half, uh, moon shape as you walk in. That's going to be where we put all the names in granite, and then we'll be leaving some space, um, to add more if we need to. And then you're going to have the POW MIA, auxiliary, World War II, um, the cannon, everything that, that's there, we're going to be placing inside the park, including the Italian American monument and the Polish-American monument, um, the Vietnam War, uh, monument that's over at the Rotary right now, all that's going over there, including the new monuments that we're building. Oh, and the Hiker Monument as well. Again, there's the three-tiered system, if you look at the bottom, that's how it's going to go from street level to about nine feet up, um, as you go throughout the park, again, all ADA compliant. So I wanted to keep this short and, uh, sweet with you guys, because you've heard it multiple times, and I wanted to make sure that our slides got up there, again, to brief you all on it. Um, for donations, you can see My Legacy, it's right up there, we just started with them a couple months ago, and, uh, we worked through all the kinks, and you can go right to that website. And what will happen is, under campaigns, you can, you can donate money there, and it's all broken down for you. So you have bricks right now, we have the luncheon, the Veterans Day Luncheon that's coming up on Monday, or next Monday, and then you also have, uh, coins that we have right now. Next will be the Dresser Park, and hopefully, very soon, uh, fundraising for the Vietnam War. Uh, just a reminder to everybody, the Southbridge Veterans Day Ceremony is going on at 10:30 on Monday, at, uh, 10:30. It will be done by about 11:15, because we got to rush over to the Hotel Conference Center, where we'll have the luncheon. Proud to say, we have many sponsors, uh, this is the largest RSVP list that we've had. When we took over, they had about 40, Veterans Council took over, partnered up with some sponsors. As of today, 184 respondents RSVPed, so we, we've, uh, done pretty well. Best but not least, after, um, the luncheon, after Veterans Day, we're supposed to know if we did receive authorization to bring the wall of hills to the town of Southbridge. We submitted our application back in September, and, uh, right now, there's 140 applications out there, there's only 30 slots throughout the United States, so hopefully, Southbridge is one of those 30. Yes, we will have to raise about $11,000 to $15,000 for this as well. Now, last thing, talk about See My Legacy, so if you take a look at the QR code right there, if you, uh, you snap it on your camera, on your iPhone, it'll take you right to the website itself. Counselors, you already have that, uh, in front of you as well, if you want to do any donations or take a look at the, uh, at the website itself. And, uh, so far, we've had a few, few individuals, uh, organizations already donate to the Veterans Council. And, uh, again, we're a 501(c)(3), you automatically get a letter as well, so you can write that off of taxes. Open up for questions.
Any questions? Comments? Counsel Rivas.
Um, thank you for this information, it was, uh, very helpful. Um, we had, I know we had talked about briefly about, um, the wooden gunners and possibly trying to, um, create a space or some aspect that could honor, um, you know, our Puerto Rican veterans, um, who contributed to the Korean War specifically. Um, I don't know if there's been any conversations about that.
There has not, we've been busy trying to get this stuff, but it, it hasn't, um, hasn't gone by the wayside. But it'd be a conversation that you and I can continue to have, please, and, and as a reminder as well. Um, and I've got, uh, the Vice President over there, she's taking notes right now.
Thank you.
Sure she is. So, no, but I appreciate you, you, uh, mentioning that, we have not had a conversation about that as of yet, but we will.
Great, I have the, I have the documentary, if you're, if you'd like to watch it, and your group can borrow at any time, the Veterans Council can borrow.
Can you send that to me?
Yep, absolutely.
If you don't mind, you can use the, um, Southbridge Veterans Council Gmail account, if you'd like, if you have it.
It's, it's not on link though, it's a, it's a DVD.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. You have to purchase it.
DVD player now.
Yeah.
All right. You sure it's not on, I'll, I'll talk to you.
But we can, we can talk about that later.
Any further questions or comments? Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just like to say thank you to both, uh, you and, uh, the Veterans Council for the great work that you're doing here. Um, it's quite an undertaking, um, I found the Vet, uh, the World Memorial Park to be, uh, a very, um, dignified, uh, uh, tribute to our veterans of World War I. Um, and I'm sure that you're going to go ahead and do a very, very, uh, excellent tribute to our veterans of other wars at the, at Dresser Park. As a veteran, these kind of things are important to me, and, um, uh, I think if you walk through that park over at, uh, the, uh, the World Memorial Park, and just wa- walk by each monument, look at the monument and think, this is a, this is a son, a daughter, a husband, um, that went to war, didn't come back, um, it's very touching, uh, it means a lot to people who have served, and it means a lot to people who, whose freedoms, uh, are a result of their sacrifice. So thank you for the, um, for honoring our veterans in the way you have, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Any further discussion?
Just want to, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, um, you know, Lieutenant Colonel over here makes a great point. Um, the, these young men, uh, that are in the World War Memorial Park, uh, obviously, those, those, uh, stones slash plaques were placed in where those kids, young men, uh, grew up. And we were able to move those things over to that one park for people to read and, um, and to understand. And what's interesting was General Patton's grandson came down and gave a speech, and as he was walking through, um, he had brought up that there was a young man that died in 1918, that his grandfather commanded. And it was interesting how he told the story, he threw out really his speech and talked about his grandfather and that area in World War I in the Argonne Forest in France. So it meant something to somebody. Uh, Counselor Daniel has a great-great uncle, correct?
Yep.
He's on one of those plaques as well, who died in Argonne Forest, I think it was 1917, somewhere around there. So, interesting, thank you.
Any other comment by counselors? If not, I just, Dave, I'd like to thank you and the Veterans Council for all the work you do, thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, and I want to thank the Veterans Council members that showed up tonight, and the Veterans Council itself, who's, um, done an amazing job, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Citizens Forum, agenda item number eight. Before I go on to that, Madam Secretary, um, Counsel Rivas is present.
Thank you.
I know we might draft, thank you. Uh, moving on to Citizens Forum, any citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda? Please approach, name and address.
My name is Shelley Klein, I live at 56 Newell Ave in town. I had the pleasure of meeting several of you last week at the Economic Development Committee. Um, I moved to town two and a half years ago, I moved here from Boston after, uh, living there for 10 years. Prior to that, I lived, uh, in Auburn. So, uh, I work from home, and I don't have enough to do with my time, and I haven't met a lot of people in the community, so I decided I, maybe I would join in a, one of the open vacant seats. So I attended the Economic Development Committee last week, and, uh, you know, I'm interested in becoming, uh, more active in the town. So, one of my questions to peg was, hey, what's going on with the downtown area? People are going to be developing it, you know, we have all these empty storefronts. Uh, and she had mentioned White Paper Strategies as one of the investment firms who's been buying up properties in town. So the following day, I started, um, well, I went down the proverbial rabbit hole.
Could you please speak into the microphone?
Of the internet, uh, looking up White Paper Strategies, uh, who they are and, and what they do. And at best, I was deeply disturbed by, uh, by their, their tactics, um, published on their own web, website, including, uh, case study of what they've done in Southbridge. In the case study, they referenced below-average tenants, they referenced that their primary tactic was to evict or to not renew current tenant leases, since the tenants were below average and the rental rates were low. This is with regards to the Edward Block in, uh, Whitfield Buildings. I think, uh, there's 56 residential units, um, that were impacted by this. Uh, in their one-year results, they, uh, they acquired the property for 5.5 million in the, uh, in May of '23, and in June of '24, they refinanced it at 7.5 million, boasting a 87% tenant turnover, 26.7% increase in, uh, rent revenue, and 42.1% increase in net operating income. So I, I believe in progress, and I believe in the free market and capitalism. But I also believe in, uh, that human beings who have lived in their homes should be able to live in their homes and not be displaced. One of the people in town that was displaced by this purchase was Jerry, I think probably most of us know Jerry. I've been here for two and a half years, I know Jerry, so I'm assuming most, most people here know Jerry. He was displaced. And so after reading about what they've done, I started, or I continued my, my search about, uh, what is happening in town with property, property ownership. And it became more apparent that investment firms outside of Southbridge, oftentimes outside of Massachusetts, and White Paper Strategies, although they said they were local, they're actually based out of Orlando, Florida, uh, are buying up large numbers of properties. Uh, just in May and June of 2024, Marcus and Millicappa Wall Street Investment facilitator, they facilitated a sale of $14 million in properties in Southbridge, which is now managed by Shield Management, which is an LLC. There's probably about 20 different LLCs that factor into these, uh, properties, but it's ultimately the same people. And so, I became curious about how that's impacting local residents. And during, so I, I think Counsel, Councilman, uh, Shenyer, I think you responded to one of my posts on Facebook. I posted in a couple of the Facebook groups, um, questions about, hey, have you lived at these addresses? Have you been impacted by these developments? And I, uh, initially wasn't receiving many responses, and somebody reached out privately and said that people are afraid to respond publicly in fear of retaliation. So I, I heard from people in the town that have worked in our Housing Authority, our Senior Center, I heard from single-family homeowners, multifamily homeowners, tenants, and other community members. This is in the span of four days. I was advised that most people were afraid to post publicly or come to town meetings for fear of retaliation from landlords. The responses that I got from people are eye-opening and should be concerning to every person on this committee, because you're here to represent the community. At 301 to 348 Main Street, rents were $8.50 to $1,100, they are now $1,550 to $1,700. People with housing vouchers were displaced, a 98-year-old woman who lived on Central Street since she was in her twenties. White Paper Strategies purchased the property and told the woman that her rent of $750 would increase to $1,800 with two months' notice. The woman had lived at the property for most of her adult life, and her plan was to die in her home. It is unclear whether this woman has found alternative housing in Southbridge. A gentleman in his 60s who is raising his two granddaughters lived on Union Street was also paying $1,250 a month. The property was purchased by an investment firm. The man received a notice that his rent was increasing from $1,250 to $2,100. The man begged and pleaded with the new owners, but they were unwilling to be flexible. The man faced homelessness of himself and his two granddaughters. The man ultimately was able to find new housing, although it is unclear if the housing is in Southbridge. 348 Main Street has had a lot of drug activity in the past year, multiple raids and arrests. I have not confirmed that with the police station, but will be doing that. Tenants typically do not last longer than a year at the Edward Block in Whitford Buildings. Community member moved into a White Paper Strategies renovated apartment at market rate in 2023, and it was advised that the rent for her unit was going to increase another $400 in 2024. The community member was unable to afford a $4,800 yearly increase in rent and had to move. When White Paper Strategies first purchased the building, they attempted to end all leases. However, many people who were receiving subsidized funds had clauses protecting them from being evicted until the end of their leases. Some of the people who were evicted had lived there for 10-plus years, and this was their home. A heartbreaking number of older adults have reportedly been vocalizing their concerns about the apartments they live in and rising rents to the team at the Senior Center. And so if I can find this out in four days with a couple of Facebook posts, I'm going to ask the council, what are you doing to ensure that people in our community have affordable housing and can stay in their homes? Through you, Chairman.
Would anybody feel, feel that? I'm a private enterprise guy, you buy a building, you own the building, you put your money in the building, you set the rate. own the building, you put your money in the building, you set the rate. If there's federal money, subsidized housing, we have that in town. We have tremendous amount of Section 8 in town. This new wave of purchases that is happening in the town of Southbridge is not just white paper. It's been happening across the board with a lot of the buildings. What's happening is people are coming in, cost of living is high, and what happens? People buy cheap properties. They put a lot of money in the building. It's not free.
Yes, and neither is the software that they use to hone in on low-income areas with aggregated rental data, making it easier for them to find these neighborhoods.
Well, there's no rent control with under 50,000 people. So, Southbridge has always been in the swing up, the swing back. We have plenty of low-income areas. We have a lot of low-income areas. We have a lot of Section 8 in those areas, and people are coming in and buying apartment buildings and really going right through them. New wiring, new plumbing, new wallboard, new roofs, new siding, windows. They're basically taking a building and they're going through it. Now, if anybody knows anything about what you're investing, if you can't get your return, why would you refurbish the building?
Sure. A $2 million return in one year is fantastic.
And to my knowledge, a lot of these investors don't have federal dollars helping them. The American Optical does. We have the over 55. We're just going for another 300 units in the American Optical. So, for myself, I'm just giving you my opinion. I don't think the council has the ability to stop it. I think that, if anything, some of the investors have come in and said, you know, we're concerned about the sidewalks, the roads. That's basically where we come into the picture, that basically around the buildings. But to go into a building, they're following the Massachusetts Building Code. They're putting in sprinklers if it's over a two-family house. And if anybody knows what a sprinkler system costs, they have to run a separate domestic line from the domestic water. These expenses come in, they're astronomical right now. They're probably at the highest they've ever been to refurbish a property. And to think that an investor is going to come into Southbridge and just keep the rate at 850, it's not going to happen. That's just economically not going to happen. And I don't think that we're in a position unless, you know, it's a subsidized unit controlled by the, like Wells, where there's federal state money, then after they have to follow the regulations with the MOD to low-income percentages. But right now, if they're coming in privately, I don't know of any laws there are to turn around and tell them to keep the rent down.
Well, I mean, I think it's your job to make bylaws.
What's that?
I think it's your job to make the bylaws to protect the residents and the community members.
You're gonna have to talk to some of these other councils. I'm not in favor of that. Anybody else want to comment? Counselor Shenier?
I've kind of been an advocate, a little bit of senior housing. And when I saw your post, I tried to put to my mind who it was that, and then I realized who it was when I met you at the meeting that we had downstairs. I live at Tag. Over the weekend, I fielded multiple calls, not multiple, a few calls from the elderly that live in there, because supposedly we're being sold again. A year and a half ago, the company, the building, was sold for $7.1 million. And a year and a half later, it's up for sale, and from what I understand, the people that live there, it was sold for 13, over 13 million. Where we live is all elderly. It used to be a 55 and over elderly complex that was subsidized by the federal government, I believe HUD. And some years ago, the subsidies ran out, and the previous owner didn't apply for any additional subsidies. Worcester Housing Authority came into town and helped the elderly that were going to be displaced when those subsidies went away. And I believe there's 21 Section 8 vouchers for the elderly in the facility, I believe that has 114, 140 units. I don't know the number of units. So, since last year, since November 1st of last year to November 1st of this year, my rent has gone up $310. I realize that we pay a low rent because the previous gentleman kept it that way. But my hands as a counselor are kind of tied because of our lack of bylaws and those kind of things. So, we do have a planning board that's in this community that works on bylaws, and hopefully they see the plight that's happening for some of the low-income, moderate-income people that are going to be affected by these moves. I don't begrudge a company coming in, buying up. They get the money, they want to spend it, they want to fix it. It's their money. I just feel that because of the lack of laws, bylaws that we have and that the state of Massachusetts has created, has made it difficult for everybody. And thank you for your work, and hopefully in the future that something will come about and help the people here.
Counselor Rivas?
Thank you. I appreciate you coming to council and, you know, reaching out to us and talking about some of the residents that have spoken to you who haven't, you know, who are afraid of retaliation and haven't been able to come forward themselves. Several of us in the community have been working on this issue, and I know our Economic Development Department, along with the Central Mass Regional Planning, put out a survey recently. And also, we're working on trying to create a housing plan, again, in order to think about all of these things, right? Not being against development or business, but really being thoughtful about displacing our residents who have been here for many, many years, and not putting a burden on our police department in having an increase in unhoused people who belong in our community, who have been in our community, and aren't going to leave their community. They're just going to end up on the street. And so, the issue I have, and I'm glad that you had sent this information to us or to me, where White Paper Strategies, when they presented here last week, talked about units, that there weren't many units occupied. You know, I have no problem with buildings being renovated that are empty, right, and not being utilized in any way. But two issues I have here, where they're saying, this was a popular method used to decrease an owner's tax burden by the exact amount of money invested in historically important buildings, right? So, they're getting tax credits. That's our tax money, right? So, we're subsidizing the developer to acquire some of the historical buildings in our community. And then later, they talk about taking a highly-quality property, right, a historical property, and focus on adjusting leasing strategies and day-to-day management versus a heavy renovations scope of work. So, that tells me that we take the money from taxpayers that we're getting, and we slap a little paint, make it look good, but not really do, you know, deep renovations that many, many of these buildings need, and then jack up the price for $500 and displace people. And so, that doesn't seem like something that we should want in our community. That is something that I'm vehemently against, a developer taking advantage of our community in that way. And so, I do think that we do need to look at the zoning and bylaws and work with the planning board and with our Economic Development Department and Central Mass Regional Planning, and think about what our housing plan is going to be. And, you know, what do we want Southbridge to look like? And how do we want to take care of our longtime residents? And, you know, rather than just taking care of developers because they're coming in and buying up all these properties. And so, there has to be a balance. And I don't appreciate being misled by people coming in and thinking that we're small-town people and we don't read information. So, thank you.
Just a quick comment, a point of clarification. When a builder gets tax credits, they usually get their tax credits because of their stretch code. The Mass Code, when you build a house, and they say, if you put in electric splits, if you do this, we give you tax credits for the quality of the building that you're building, the R factor, we have, the state pours a lot of money into everybody's house. If you double-insulate the attic, they come in, there are groups that do it for the state. That's why when someone comes in and buys a building and they do the upgrades, where the tax credit comes in is in the quality of the upgrades. Get rid of oil, go to electric, split units. I mean, we have a council that deals with that on a daily basis, HVAC. Every building that is touched and transferred over to a different type of clean, green, in comes the tax credits. So, to save again a tax credit, to slap some paint on a building, wrong. I think you have to understand the Mass Building Code a little bit, the stretch code, and a lot of the things that you do to a building that is pushed by those tax credits. They're giving you the credits so you can bring that building into the 21st century, as they say, with the new green deal.
Yes, I'm familiar with the green energy credit.
But I'm just saying, don't make it look like you're just slapping paint on a building and still leaving it the way it is. Anybody that looked at the pictures in their presentation of the apartments now and the apartments after they're done, I thought it was like a night and day.
With all due respect, Councilman Lazo, the pictures of the apartment that they presented in that meeting were on Chandler Street in Worcester.
Just saying.
I'm just saying that was...
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd like to thank you for coming here, and you've identified a problem, a problem that exists in Southbridge, but not only Southbridge, but virtually every community in the state at this point. This is a problem that's rolling statewide. It's not even confined to Massachusetts. It's becoming a nationwide problem. You have developers, or I should say, usually it's their LLC investment firms who come in and buy up properties. Some are developers, and they'll come in and buy up distressed properties and refurbish them and put them back on the market. What you have here, though, is a problem that none of these people are doing anything illegal. That's the issue, okay? Everything they've done is perfectly legal. They've come in here, they've refurbished the buildings, they've all passed their code requirements, they've gotten their permits, and they passed inspection, and they had certificates of habitability, and they were able to re-lease these places at a much higher rate. That unfortunately is the market. And the real estate market is very much a supply and demand market. So, because supply is so restricted, because supply is so restricted in this state, there's a high demand. And that's the law of economics, is that you get the price that the market will provide to you. And unfortunately, right now, it's a very high market. So, I'm sympathetic to what you're telling us. I'm very much concerned about it myself. Massachusetts, however, since 1974, does not have rent control. We could not, as a council, impose any type of rent control on any landlord. One of the problems that we do have, however, is zoning. One of the reasons why we have a situation where people are coming in and taking, we aren't building new inventory. That's one of the big problems, right? We aren't building new inventory. The more supply, all right, typically, in a supply-demand situation, when demand goes up, supply will be restricted for a while, but then people will build or make or whatever to meet the demand. That's not happening in real estate today. It's not happening in the Massachusetts real estate market. And that's one of the problems that you have. This is not a Southbridge problem, unfortunately. I certainly, I mean, I recognize the problem, and I appreciate that you have brought the problem to our attention. The folks that are coming in here, however, aren't doing anything illegal. And I would ask you, what type of solutions would you have us do on this issue?
Well, I'll be back with those solutions. And I understand the free market and supply and demand very well. And I also understand there's been little construction, new construction in Southbridge. And I also understand that private investment firms are buying up about 30% of housing inventory across Massachusetts and the rest of the U.S. And I do realize, obviously, they're not doing anything illegal. However, I do think it is the town's responsibility to take care of the community and to make sure that people aren't displaced by whatever method needs to happen. And I can assure you, I will be back with some suggestions for that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Just quickly, while I do, I absolutely agree that there are tax, you know, tax incentives when you're upgrading property, in, you know, in ways where you're making it more efficient. As someone that's worked in the community on this issue for a long time, I'm very familiar with that. But that isn't what White Paper Strategies is marketing on their site. And so, they are specifically talking about historical properties and getting tax breaks for historical properties, and then doing minimal repairs. I mean, it says it right on their website. It says it in black and white, and focusing on leasing strategies, again, displacing people. And so, I'm very happy to work with developers that, you know, are willing to increase efficiency and help people not be displaced. Yes, capitalism, you know, we believe in that. This is America. But there is a way to approach housing and approach how things are, you know, are done when you are developing property and creating housing in our community. It shouldn't be at the expense of people in our community that have been here for a long time.
Any other comments? Any other citizen who would like to address the town council on any issues that's not on the agenda tonight? State your name and address.
Hi there. Denise Clemens, 128 Country Club Place. You all know me pretty much. And I was just here on one issue, but I must say, I'm glad that the former citizen brought up White Paper Strategies, because I have also investigated them a little while back with some properties and such, and was not liking what I was hearing. So, if nothing else comes of it, at least perhaps there are other sellers out there in the area that might think twice about selling to them. I know that we purchased recently a property that they had approached the owner on, and we were fortunate enough that the owner saw a different vision. And we hope that we can make that come true with the property we have. However, it still exists the same situation with some long-term tenants at very low rents, but in a building that was, that is, there are words for the building. And we are planning to make it much better than it is, but hopefully not causing so much pain in the interim. But it's unfortunate. There are bylaws, there aren't bylaws that can do what it is people are expecting this council to do. And I can understand, having sat there for nine years, I can understand where they're coming from. It's the way of the world, unfortunately, right now for everybody. So, okay, moving on to something maybe a little more festive and happy thoughts, a free, a free event, and that's always good. So, I came to before, and I mentioned that Southbridge Holiday Visions, every year we've been, for the past at least 15 years, we have been trying to create some holiday spirit. We continue to do that. We've got some help from the town who keeps their property intact here at our workshop on Mill Street. And this weekend, this Saturday in particular, is our big distribution day. It's distribution weekend. However, the rain may affect us on Sunday, which would then push us to the following week to work. But I'm here saying that we just haven't had much help this year. I say that a lot, and I'm saying it again. And it's kind of sad because it is a community event that is free. And we would certainly... event that is free, and we would certainly like to have more involvement by the public out there. Having said that, this Saturday, 9:00, we will be meeting on the Town Common. We will have loaded trucks, wonderful Penske that we get donated every year from, from, oh my gosh, Brenda LeCare, from Steve's Collision, she's wonderful to lend us a truck, and a few others. We will load up on Friday evening, and we will meet at the Town Common at 9:00. If anyone is interested in helping, don your gloves, bring, wear your warm clothes, and come on out, spend a few hours of the day with us, and see how things really happen here in Southbridge. It takes many hands and a lot of good backs, but there's a job for everybody. We encourage families, if your children are old enough to take direction and participate, that's fine. If not, we suggest that they don't attend this particular event. We have a wonderful Subway is sponsoring our lunch, so if you work the day with us, you will get lunch on Saturday, along with some water, and a lot of kudos for your efforts. We move things, we pound things in the ground, we erect elves and trees and everything else under the sun, and we get it done. It usually takes both days. As I said, if we can't get it done on Saturday, we will work on Sunday, weather permitting, same hours, 9 to 4:00, and then we will also work the following weekend, and that will be announced. Information can be found on our Facebook page, Southbridge Holiday Visions has a Facebook page, it's open to anybody to look at if you have the internet. You can also send us an email if you want more information at southbridgeholidayvisions@yahoo.com. We post, as I said, on the Facebook, we certainly answer our emails, and you can also call or send me a text, 508-277-4494. If you have a truck and you want to show up, bring your truck, we'll load you up, and you can help us distribute items throughout the town. All of this is in preparation for November 30th this year, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, when we have the tree lighting, which you are, of course, all invited to, and we have our parade, which you can sign up for. Again, information is on our Facebook page and usually here on our wonderful Southbridge Cable Television information bulletin board. That is Saturday, November 30th. We have a parade starting at 5:00, which leaves from the Wellsworth Hotel parking lot. We are very lucky that the Wellsworth allows us to, to line up there and go throughout the town, and then we end at the Town Common with a wonderful event, and we want to thank our sponsor, one of our major sponsors for that, which is the Southbridge Cultural Council, which is supported by the Mass Cultural Council. They help to provide Santa, our DJ, and the Zeppelinmas. So we are very grateful for all that they do for us. But volunteers, if you can give a little bit of time this weekend, next weekend, on the 30th, it really would mean a lot to us. It's, it's hard, I have family members and a few great people that show up and help us out, but we could use more help for this community event. So I, I hope and encourage you to, if you want to see this continue, you need to step up and be part of it. There's only so much we can do humanly. So, look for the information, Southbridge Holiday Visions, and get in touch with us. Would love to have you, as I said, join us. And that's about it. If you have any questions, let me know, and please join us this weekend, next weekend, the 30th.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure I'll be back before then to, to announce this again, but thanks to all.
Thank you very much, Denise, and thank you for all the time you put in with the family.
Good luck with the housing.
Thank you. Anybody else in the citizen forum that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the council? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 9, Vote to Approve Applying for the FEMA's Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities Grant Program for 75% funding to purchase and install a generator at the Town Hall with the match to be funded in capital account 64822 and allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved by the Committee, 4 to 0. I'd like the Town Manager to speak to it, I would just have a question as how much is in that capital account, because I remember we were going to do the generator, I think the first year I was on the council, we, we had approved that, so.
So, that capital account right now holds $135,000. So as I discussed with Peg, you know, not only is it the generator, but it's also the electrical panels, making sure that we have the electrician and all that. So that will allow us to, you know, potentially go up to a little over $500,000 for the whole project. We would hope that we don't spend all that money and save that, but at least when we build the plan, we have that match, so we have up to a match of $135,000, which will, well, will go a good distance to get it, to make sure that's sized right and everything like that. So I know the fire station generator, when we did the switch panel alone, was roughly about $250,000 for the generator, the switch panel itself, so I think this is a great opportunity for us to put a generator into this building and save money along the way.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 10, Vote to Designate the Building Commissioner, Department of Public Works Director, and Economic Development and Planning Director as Designee Selection Committee for the Town Hall Facility Study, RFP scoring process, and allowing the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Counselor Kelly. Discussion. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved 4 to 0 by the committee. We did make one amendment to it. The original agenda had the Town Manager serving, but the committee felt that the Town Manager should not be on this planning committee, design selection committee, so I'll let the Town Manager speak to it if he'd like to. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, if there's a question.
I think I had a question earlier on whether there was a slot for a citizen to be on the committee.
So, I would just say through, through you, Mr. Chairman, this is simply for us to evaluate the proposal for the selection of the person to do this study. It's not a building committee. Once we get to a building committee, then we would talk with the chairman to decide how that building committee is set forward. This is purely for us to do the study alone, so it's not the building committee itself, it's just the selection. I have no problem with deferring to someone else, because we did do that with the wastewater treatment plant, RFP process, where I, because I am the Chief Procurement Officer, I felt it right for, like, the Chairman of the Council, DPW, our engineer, all participated in the score of that, and that gave a recommendation to me, so I have no problem with that similar process for this RFP.
I think the discussion was that the Town Manager basically oversees all committees as they're formed. This committee here, the, the thing was to get the Building Commissioner on, because it's a building issue. We wanted to put people that know something about the buildings and the construction portion, so that's why there was a switch and subcommittee. Seemed to be pretty agreeable. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to add, eventually, I think we will have a building committee, and I think, my own personal opinion is we should have a full-time, permanent building committee, but this is just to get the ball rolling on this, it's not an actual building committee. And when we do have one, there'll probably be some citizens on that committee, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 11, Vote to Enter Into A Contract With The Department Of Energy Resources For The Energy Efficiency Community Development Block Grant For $68,997 For Weather Rising Upgrades To The Police Station And Allow The Town Managers To Sign All Related Paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved by the Committee, 4 to 0.
Thank you. unanimous of the subcommittee. Discussion.
Counselor Shinya? Through you to the Town Manager. I, I might have asked this question the night of the discussion came up. At $68,997 for the police station, have we decided what was going to happen to the weatherization for the other buildings that we got money for? Is it wise to do a bid for everything, like the community center, the fire station?
The community center, the DPW, and the library are all under separate contracts already, we already approved those.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all separate entities, all within bids that we've already done.
Okay, thank you.
Or agreements that we have done.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 12, Vote to Enter Into A Contract With The Executive Office Of Economic Development For The Mass Works Grant Of $2,700,000 To Complete The River Crane Street Phase 2 Construction And Allow The Town Manager To Sign All Related Paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was also approved by the Committee, 4 to 0 vote, and we are very, very happy to do so. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment on this. Peg Dean, once again, the Energizer Bunny in the grant writing room, just when you thought you weren't going to get something, she comes through with flying colors again. Thank you, Peg. Job well done. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 13, Vote An Extension To The CDBG FY21 Grant To March 2025 And Allow The Town Manager To Sign All Related Paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was also approved by the Committee, 4 to 0.
Favorable subcommittee, any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14, Vote To Amend The Town Council Vote On October 7, 2024 Agenda Item 14 To Project Number 64860 Due To A Typographical Mistake. So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Counselor?
There wasn't really further information about this. What was the original vote for, or anything like that?
It was a vote to a DPW, I had asked that to be included, I apologize if it wasn't included in the packet. That vote was a vote DPW requests to re-designate and reallocate the remaining funds in sewer capital account, repair concrete platforms and docks for the purchase of the computer equipment in the wastewater treatment plant. So it's just the account number instead of 74860, it should have been 64860.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15, Vote To Amend The Town Council Vote On October 7, 2024 Agenda Item 15 To Project Number 64290 Due To A Typographical Error. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz. Any discussion?
I'd just say that this was the DPW request to re-designate and reallocate the remaining funds in sewer project, and again, it was the wrong, for the electrical upgrades at wastewater treatment plant with a remaining balance of 17,337 to be used for the DPW conference room that we had previously approved. So it's just, we're not changing any, it's money that was already allocated, it's just a project code that has to be for accounting purposes.
Counselor Kelly?
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16, Vote To Confirm The Timber Sale Agreement With Kenneby Lumber Company To Pay The Town Of Southbridge $61,220 For 267,480 Board Feet And 101 Cords For Firewood To Be Harvested Under The Timber Harvest 3 And Allow The Town Manager To Sign All Related Paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz. Town Manager?
Thank you. So this is part of our forestry management plan. They're paying us for the plan that we put forward. They figure out how much is going to be harvested, then they put out a bid, and we, and this one, we're not looking for the lowest bid, we're looking for the highest amount of money for, for them to be paid to the town of Southbridge, so it's part of that plan, and they go out and put out a bid for that, and the highest bidder for the amount of money to pay us was Kennebunk Lumber at $61,220.
Any further discussion? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So this property, just reading through here, is somewhere off of Everett Street? That's the way I was reading this.
It's in the watershed, so it's part of the water department's forestry management to make sure that the waters manage properly.
And somebody is going to, you know, I've seen some areas that were completely cleared and kind of left a problem, so, just somebody's going to at least oversee this to make sure...
We, we, we contract out with a forestry management company. That was previously done at DPW. So they have a plan, they go through, they work with the water department to clear certain areas to regenerate growth. So they cut out and regenerate the growth, so it is all part of a management plan.
But this didn't go through a subcommittee or...
This did not, because they gave it to me last minute to get up so that we could get the money into, it's the sale of property, it's not that we're asking to spend money, we're asking to get money in.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Rivas?
Not a question, just commenting. When I did visit the water treatment facility, they did talk to me about this management plan, and I think that, you know, this is great that it came up so quickly, and, you know, it will help us manage the area in order to, for them to be able to, you know, have the best results for, you know, for our citizens. So I do think that it makes a lot of sense, and we have a great group who really analyzes and makes sure that everything there is working properly and we're getting the best bang for our buck in that area, and also not harming the environment. And I, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness about that piece, because you don't often get that balance, so I just wanted to comment on that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to Counselors' Forum. Counselor Mottetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I did want to comment about Ms. Klein coming up here and talking about the housing problems. I do feel, I feel bad for somebody whose rent is going up, what, it sounded to me like it was like $1,200. At least over $1,000, that's, just seems like a little outrageous. However, to, to have a big discussion here during a citizens' forum, I don't think is proper. Citizens' forum is for a citizen to come up and talk, it's their turn to talk, I don't think the councilor should be having a back-and-forth. That's just my opinion. One thing I would like to say, you know, when it comes time for taxes to be going up, I'd like to make sure that these properties, that they're, they're raising the rent that much, it seems to me that they should be paying more taxes, and every time we do our tax, tax time at the end of the month, I think, it's always the single families that are hit the hardest, and the people that are owning these big apartment complexes, they don't seem to be hitting, hit at all. In fact, a lot of times, their, their taxes go down, so if they're getting this kind of money, I would think that their taxes would go up, but anyways, I do feel bad for it. I don't know what we could do about it either, but it is, does sound like gouging to me. The other thing is, I did have some residents who asked me about the Wi-Fi at Jacob Ebert's Library, and I did go over there, and it seems pretty slow. They told me that it, they think it has something to do with, with the cable, and they're looking forward to the, the optic cables that are going to be coming in there, they don't, I don't know when that's going to happen. I also noticed that here at the Town Hall, it's even slower. I think I went online with my phone, and it was .09 on a speed test, which is pretty slow. So, that leads me to the ARPA, we did have an ARPA meeting, and we are still waiting for several departments to say, to give us a contract, this is what we're spending the money on, and one of those was the optic line, that we're waiting to see a contract for that, and if we don't get that, we're running out of time here, so I hope that you have a backup plan to use the funds so we don't lose the money after the end of the year, because December, that's it. If we don't have something in writing, I think we're going to, we'll end up losing the money. So hopefully you'll have something in Plan B going forward. He wants to say something.
Well, just through you. Yes, we have worked, I have worked with Victor, we are prepared to, as you remember, we combined the money from ARPA to do the network upgrades here, we have those quotes, I will be bringing an update to ARPA this week with that information.
And finally, tomorrow is the big vote. I hope residents of Southbridge get out there and vote. It's been a long time, it feels like this election's been going on forever, so I will be very happy when this is over with, finally. You know, Southbridge doesn't live in a vacuum, we're part of the United States of America. We're part of the United States of America. We all get a chance to vote, and no matter how it turns out, I hope that nobody up here feels that I'm their enemy, because I'm not. We just have a difference of opinion. Whatever happens, I will live with it, you will live with it. I remember the first time I voted, I voted for George McGovern, and Richard Nixon won that year. I had a lot of friends that voted for Richard Nixon, but we didn't...
Tell me they voted for Jimmy Carter. Don't feel bad.
We didn't become enemies over it. We still went out and drank beers together and worked together and played baseball together. So I think we should all try to live together, and whatever happens tomorrow, that's what happens tomorrow. So get out there and vote, everybody. Thank you.
Counsel, I apologize. By the way, you're correct. It shouldn't have been a debate under citizen forum. Maybe it should have been referred to a subcommittee for a discussion. I stand corrected, and it won't happen again. Counsel Daniels.
I'm all set tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Shinia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I thought that Counsel Marquetti voted during the Abraham Lincoln era, but I'm mistaken. I'm wondering through you to the Town Manager. I have my hearing aids in, and I still can't hear stuff. I don't know if there's something they can put behind us so we can hear over here, but it's difficult. I don't know why. It's just the end. Counsel Kelly, I didn't hear what you said, but I'll agree with you anyways, but...
I'll look at it.
If you could.
Another Republican.
And then the other thing, it's, not that I disagree with Counsel Ozil, Chairman Ozil and Counsel Marquetti, but I think when a citizen comes up to the podium, that we should be able to interreact with that citizen so we can either give them our opinions or our suggestions or our ideas as they give to us, not to go into debate, but to send some questions.
I think maybe we should have referred it to the subcommittee. We'll work on that. I don't think we should debate on the citizen's forum. Citizen is usually, has a problem and would complain to us, and we would say duly noted, we'll take care of it. But it was an open question, and I answered it, and I shouldn't have. I should have just turned around and said, you know, we'll go to Planning Board, or we'll go to subcommittee and work on it. But the thing is, I think that's a, there's so much to that question that it couldn't be answered tonight anyways.
And then my last thing is, everybody, please go out and vote tomorrow. Vote your choice, who you think is the best. Be patient with the staff that's going to be at the polling places, because I'm sure it's going to be very busy, and wish everybody good luck. And I want to thank Mrs. Klein for coming tonight, and I just, again, Rich Bonoye down DPW, you just seemed to step up the plate again, and with Blackmail Road, and it was a job well done. And just, everybody, thank you.
Counsel Ortiz.
I have nothing tonight.
Counsel Rivas.
Thank you to you. I have a couple of things. I'm very sad to hear about us not getting the rise grant yet again. Sooner or later, that has to come through. I know the businesses and residents on Hamilton Street, you know, are, you know, always asking about their area, so. Two things, just to give people information when it comes to the issues of housing and bylaws. Planning Board will have a meeting on Wednesday, November 6, at 6:30. Part of their agenda is workshopping zoning bylaws. They are discussing ADUs, the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, you know, again, all connected to housing. And another piece of information for residents, I had mentioned the community, the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee and our Economic Development Department are having presentations on housing at the community center Tuesday, November 12, at 10:00 AM in Spanish, en español. Van a hablar sobre las condiciones del pueblo, sobre las residencias. And at 11:00 AM in English, again, at the community center on Tuesday, November 12. So more opportunities to get involved and talk about these issues, you know, for residents to participate in these discussions and this planning for our community. Two other notes. I was glad to see, and I appreciate the work that the Recreation Department did on the Horribles Parade in the Halloween night at the Town Common, collaborating with Bridget Thomas Bashan, who brought our new plan around trunk or treat at the common. Many, many families participated, lots of really happy kids. It was a really safe environment. I know our police department was really happy about, you know, how it was put together and that, you know, we could keep kids safe and happy and participating and bringing community together on a night that sometimes, you know, can be a little anxiety, you know, driven for our police department with kids on the streets. So that was great to see. And I also want to thank everyone who came out for our Stand Against Racism on Saturday. We really, it was just a moment to celebrate Puerto Rico and to really uplift our community, you know, in light of recent comments about our island being trashed, which it is not. And in our community, came together, people came, you know, from Worcester, from Providence to support us and spend money in our community. So that was a nice time. It was great to see people, you know, driving by, waving their Puerto Rican flags, people stopping by and expressing their support. I do want to read just a quick statement that Rep. Marcy, who could not be there, but he did send, he did send some comments, and I do want to share them with the community. He wants everyone to know that I stand with them and support our vibrant, vibrant community. And again, like I said, on Saturday, the Puerto Rican community is a big part of Southbridge, its history and its future and present. And, you know, and our students should know that we have a history of many contributions, including to many of our, you know, our military and our wars. In every single war, there have been Puerto Rican soldiers who have fought in those wars. And, you know, we have contributed in all aspects of American life, and we are American citizens. So that was really what we were there to talk about and celebrate, and I appreciate those who came. It was very spontaneous, so there wasn't a lot of time, you know. I did send everyone an invite, but I know it was a short, short notice, you know, to get everyone there, so. But thank you. I just wanted to express gratitude.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Keep it nice and short. Folks, get out there and vote. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel Kelly. Vice Chairman Montigny.
Thank you very much. I apologize if somebody else has already mentioned this tonight, but the only thing I wanted to mention or reiterate would be that Governor Healey announced the provisional decision to remove Holyoke Public Schools from receivership effective July 1, 2025, which of course leaves hope for Southbridge in the future to have the same sort of exit. Hopefully, we can all continue working together, and thank you very much.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Discussion next meeting date. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Discussion next meeting date is Monday, November 18, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Shinia, seconded by Montigny. All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Meetings adjourned.